The time's now four o'clock and I'd like to call this a regular meeting of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission Order. First item on our agenda is approval of the August 6, 2013 Agenda. Are there any changes to that agenda?
No.
See none? Look for a motion.
So moved, Gustafson.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the agenda. Next item is the approval of minutes from the regular meeting on July 2, 2013. Actually, get a vote first. Oh, yeah. I haven't been here in two months. Sorry about that. We'll go back and do a vote on that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Now, the next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from the regular meeting of July 2, 2013. Any comments, revisions to those minutes? See none? Look for a motion again.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. The motion carries. Onto the financial report.
Staff? This is Anderson with staff. The financial report in your packet is actually the end of the year, June 2013, so that's the end of the city's fiscal year. So we should be at 100% in most categories. You can see that we're pretty close to that. Some of the revenue ones are actually up above that, at 122% for service totals. Some of those are a little ways below that, 85% for capital asset sales. Overall, for the revenue that we had targeted, we were at 71% for the year. We were a little bit lower in property sales for this year, last year. For the expense sides, we're right where we should be. You can see some of them are a little bit above, some are a little bit below, and the percentages with the finance department then will fix all those through line item transfers at the end of the year, basically, so that we're still spending the same amount of money that we are supposed to. So, we're in good shape for last year.
Questions for staff? See none? Look for a motion to push that on to City Council.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now that carries. Next item is oral presentations. This is for anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to the commission for anything that's not on tonight's agenda.
I think we should just go with it. I mean, that's a pretty good song.
Seeing none, we'll move on to our regular agenda items. And for the sake of time, since we have six public hearings on the agenda, as well as several plat requests, we're going to group some of the plat requests with the site amendment public hearing, just to help carry things on. So, the first one is, the time's now 4:04. This is a request by Blackhawk Contracting and Development for a site plan amendment to the R1 and RP Planned One and Two Family Residence District to allow for the construction of 12 new single-family homes on 3.2 acres, generally located south of Hawthorne Avenue and east of Vermont Street, also known as Baltimore Field. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, site plan, drawings, and aerial photos was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on July 26, 2013." Can I receive a motion? Can I have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For those who wish to speak for or against this request, we'd ask that you come to the microphones and identify yourself by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphone. This is going to go along with, on the agenda, if you have one in front of you, its items C1, which is a request by Blackhawk Contracting and Development for the 12 lot preliminary plat of Baltimore Field Hawthorne Replat, generally located south of Hawthorne Avenue and east of Vermont Street, as well as C2, which is a request by Blackhawk Contracting and Development for the four lot final plat of Baltimore Field Hawthorne Replat First Edition, generally located along the east side of Vermont Street, just south of Hawthorne Avenue. Wow. Staff report.
Zandera, staff. This is for the site plan amendment request for the R1 RP Planned Residence District to construct 12 new single-family houses at Baltimore Field along Vermont Street, as well as a new extension of Denver Street. Request to construct the new single-family homes would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area, and the proposed houses and their proposed designs would blend in well with the surrounding neighborhood. Proposed site plan amendment would not appear to have a negative impact on surrounding traffic conditions. Surrounding area is made up of multiple local streets, including Vermont Street, Eureka Street, Hawthorne Avenue, Byron Avenue, and Denver Streets. Area in question zone, R1 RP Planned Residence District, to the north is land zoned R2, south is land zoned R1 RP, to the east is land zoned R2, and to the west is single-family residence and light commercial development zone R2 and C1. Within Vermont Street, there is an eight-inch sanitary sewer, four-inch drain tile, and 33-inch storm sewer. In Eureka, to the south, there is a four-inch drain tile and eight-inch sanitary sewer. Within Denver, north of Hawthorne Avenue, there's a 15-inch sanitary sewer that will be extended southward to serve the new houses along the extension of Denver Street. Planned Residence District is site plan specific, and changes to the site plan must be approved through a site plan amendment as either a major or minor amendment. There are multiple styles of houses being proposed for the site, ranging from ranch style, split foyer, Cape Cod style, along with two-story dwellings. Each dwelling is shown with a two-stall attached garage, with one being shown as 22 by 24, 528 square feet. Sizes of the dwellings are shown as 24 by 50, 1,200 square feet. However, these amounts may change as different style homes are developed within the area. Tracked the land that the 12 new single-family houses will be constructed on is 3.2 acres, with lot sizes ranging from 12,769 to 9,157. Staff goal, the redevelopment of areas such as these represent the best possible infill homes. Staff believes that the new construction will have a positive impact upon the surrounding neighborhood through better designs, compatible with bigger yards, more home amenities, and compatible with bigger houses. This development is meant to uplift the neighborhood and make the surrounding neighbors encouraged with the redevelopment and secure that it is helping their property values and future investments in their own homes. Staff's recommendation that the request for a site plan amendment to the R1 RP Planned Residence District be approved for the following reasons. Request is located within the primary growth area according to the City Waterloo Comprehensive Plan, and can be served by extension of existing utilities in the area. Propelled use would not appear to have a negative impact upon the area and be compatible with existing development in the area. Proposed development is within the density requirements set forth within the zoning ordinance, and subject to the following conditions: That the final site plan meet all city codes, regulations, etc., including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, etc., and that sidewalk is properly installed along the frontage of all developed lots, including corner lots. Now, on to the preliminary plat. Excuse me. Applicants requesting to plat 12 residential lots at the intersection of Vermont and Hawthorne Avenue, along an extension of Denver Street. Planting the land would not appear to have a negative impact upon existing vehicular use and pedestrian traffic in the area, as well as not having a negative impact upon the surrounding area. As noted, the 12 lots consist of the preliminary plat containing 3.19 acres, just located south of Hawthorne Avenue, along the extension of Denver Street. There are 10-foot utility easements located along the frontage of all lots within the subdivision. There are 30-foot building setback lines showing on the frontages and rears of all lots in the subdivision, which is the minimum requirement for the R1 One and Two Family Residence District, which would be the same requirement for the R1 RP. Each lot is 70 feet wide with seven-foot side yard setbacks. Ordinance notes that the required side yard setback in the R1 is 10% of the lot width at the building line. Proposed sanitary sewer, storm sewer, as well as water lines would be extended down Denver Street. There are already necessary utilities within Vermont Street to serve the plat. Elevations of the plat range from 875 feet on the northeast corner to 884 feet on the southwest portion of the plat. Staff is recommending approval of the request for the preliminary plat of Baltimore Field Hawthorne Replat be approved due to the following reasons. The plat can be serviced by the extension of existing utilities in the area. The plat isn't in coordinates with the subdivision ordinance and would appear to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and the plat will create an infill development site within the primary growth area, as well as additional housing development options within the city of Waterloo. Applicants also requesting a four residential lot final plat, also known as Baltimore Field Hawthorne Replat First Edition. Request for the plat would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area, as well as not having a negative impact upon existing traffic conditions and pedestrian conditions in the area.
This is a note, real quick, for the commissioners. That's starting on page 118 in your packet, and the map for the final plats on page 123. Sorry about that.
No portion of the plat is located within a special flood hazard area, as indicated by the flood insurance map. Future land use map designates this area as parks, open space, schools, airport, government facilities, and public areas. Final plat consists of four lots containing approximately .9 acres of land, which is just located south of the intersection of Hawthorne Avenue and Vermont Street. There are already necessary utilities within Vermont Street, which are an eight-inch sanitary sewer, four-inch drain tile, and 33-inch storm sewer. As noted, there are 30-foot building lines showing on the frontages and rears of all the lots, as previously noted in the preliminary plat request. It is staff's recommendation that the request for the final plat of Baltimore Field Hawthorne Replat First Edition be approved due to the following reasons. The plat can be serviced by the extension of existing utilities in the area. The plat isn't in coordinates with the subdivision ordinance and would appear to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The plat will create an infill development site within the primary growth area, as well as additional housing development options within the city, and subject to the following conditions: That deeded dedication is submitted, and two, that sidewalk is properly installed along the frontages of all lots in the subdivision, as well as along the frontages of all corner lots in the subdivision.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none. Anybody in the audience like to?
Wait, 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 wait. I was writing. Okay. I've had a lot of phone calls about people that have heard that this was coming up again. So my biggest question is, is this is an amendment to a request that came several months ago? So tell me, what is being amended on what we had already approved?
Well, I think you're thinking of the south half of Baltimore Field that already came before.
Okay.
Commission. This is just for the north half.
Other side. Okay.
Yep. Yep. So we're not amending anything to the south half right now.
Okay. And we're still talking about owner-owned properties?
Right.
Okay. And I think that's all.
Okay.
Tim, I noticed that Denver Street was a cul-de-sac in this plan. Is that temporary until they connect, or will Denver Street connect all the way through?
Well, it's intention, once the south has developed, it will connect all the way through. So it's just temporary at this time.
Any other questions for staff? Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against the site plan amendment?
My name's Dave Reader. I live at 1200 Baltimore Street, but I do have a few questions looking at the plot that you had. If you bring up the picture where they had the, where it was all plotted out for the north half of Baltimore Field, and that goes from Hawthorne down, basically, to Byron. It's the picture that had the red outline on it. Can you bring that one? That's not, yeah, that, no, the one before that, that had the whole square that they're going to develop. The alley coming up on the backside of the 1100 block even side of Baltimore there is, it's not straight by any means, and maybe this is a better question for Jim Ellis and John Ruff, but have they moved the lot lines differently or the, for the properties that are going to be developed, because that alley's not straight by any means, and it doesn't, and if it shoots all the way through to Eureka Street, it's, there's no way it's even close to being straight. So I don't know if they've changed the lot lines at all. You talked about that once.
My name is Jim Ellis, 126 Haynes Avenue. We did, the north half and the south half of Baltimore Field are being, John's taking the lead on the north half, I'm taking the lead on the south half. We did turn in the preliminary plat that did make some accommodations for the future extension of the alley, or keeping the alley where it's at. I see on this section that it's not making that accommodation. I think that's more a question for the planning department.
Okay.
Because originally, on the south half, we were, we did get the request to not make accommodation for the alley, so I think that's an item of discussion at this point. And I think we need to address that to the planning.
For the north half?
For the north half. I was asked for the south half to amend the preliminary plat to not accommodate the alley, and then this plat for the north half is reflecting that. So, accommodations, the alley, we did talk about it at one point. I think that's still an issue of discussion, because the parcels can be developed accommodating the alley where it's at today, which is the alignment that shows it coming into that red box. That's just a question of whether planning and zoning wants to keep it, and I think that really needs to be addressed.
Yeah, because the way the lots are set up right now, the lots are set up where it ties into the existing alley, and I know that in speaking with Jim earlier, that they wanted to possibly move the plot lines, or for each lot, they wanted to move the alley so they could make it wider anyway. So I know that that's an issue there, and when they do that, I hope that they carry it all the way down to the south end, so that it runs all the way straight through. One question that I have, I know that you guys want to put houses on all of these lots. What is the possibility of just someone buying a vacant lot? I mean, there's a lot of places in town where people own two lots, and they have a house on one, they have a vacant lot right beside it. Is that a possibility, or when people buy these lots, do they have to put a house on it? I mean, what's, where are we at with it?
This is Anderson with staff. Previously, the City Council has approved a development agreement with residential development partners LLC, which is John Ruff and Jim Ellis, but actually has a timeline in it for, they are responsible for making sure that a certain number of houses are built on there in a phased project setup over a number of years. So, I don't have the details right in front of me, but if they're creating 14 lots, and if the development agreement says that they have to build 14 houses, there would not be any empty lots out there. If they came forth and they were able to plat 16 lots and are required to build 14 houses, there's a potential for having two empty lots out there, but the goal was to build houses on all the lots.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. This is Gustafson. Jim, can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
I think at a previous meeting, I had asked you, these are not spec homes. You're not building spec homes.
No.
So, these houses are only going to be built after someone has met the qualifications and, you know, a realtor's sold them a house and property?
That's correct.
Okay.
The way we've been doing it is, we have a realtor that works with us. They go out through their networking, they find the buyer, the buyer is obtained, we sit down with the home manufacturer and work out the floor plan. The bank is actually sitting there at the same time, and they get the financing approved. So we don't actually start building until everybody's signed on the dotted line, and so everything is pre-sold.
Okay. So, another question that I've had from several people in the neighborhood is, once you take possession of this, I mean, start platting it and everything, will you guys be maintaining the field, making sure that it gets mowed and that it's well cared for? Because the neighborhood does that now, and, you know, and we really don't want to have an eyesore with tons of weeds and stuff, so just wanted to make sure that that was what your intention is, because it could be a while before you sell any of those lots, so.
Does the Neighborhood Association take care of it right now?
Several neighbors do. Not the association, but several neighbors in the association do it. Yep.
Noel is?
I think they mow parts of it.
Parts of it?
The city mows the majority of it. The development agreement actually requires the city continue to mow it until it's final platted.
Okay.
So you'll notice for this request for today, they're doing a preliminary plat, which lays it out on a preliminary basis of 12 lots, and then they're doing a final plat of four lots. So we would still be responsible for the area outside of that four lots.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. As soon as the final plating occurs, then that becomes our responsibility to maintain from that point on.
Sure.
So, yep, that was addressed.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
I'm Kirk Eschleman with Keston Associates, and I actually represent Ruff for the north half of the block, and actually, the block we're talking about right now. So we would be dealing with your alley. That is something that, at this point in time, we had not addressed with staff, in that we're still going through how we're going to handle some of the design features, and the fact that a good example is, is Denver Street has no storm sewer, and yet, we're going to be required to put storm sewer in, along with how do we get the storm sewer to that location. So there's a lot of details that are going to have to be worked out on the preliminary side of the rest of that development, along with how to handle that alley. The fact that the alley's outside the limits is a legal issue. There have been times in the past where we have literally regraded the alleys to where they're supposed to be. However, we can work them out. I know there's several locations in town where, I can think about up on Dale Drive, there's one alley up there that one side has fenced to the property line, and the other side's occupying half of the alley, and you can't hardly get through that alley. So, those are issues that are going to have to be worked out before we finish the final for the second addition to this one. That's part of the reason why we went ahead, was there was interest in the lots on Vermont, and so that way, because of the infrastructure already there, we can go ahead with the final plat, and go ahead and move ahead with the sales on that side.
It's just that the people that live on the Baltimore side of those, of your plot, they still want to make sure that they're going to have access to their garages and to their properties on the back.
I understand that.
Until it gets formalized and they have a firm idea about what exactly is going to happen, it's really hard for them, you know, to sleep at night, because they don't know if somebody's going to come and say they have to move their garage, or they have to, you know.
Haven't even gotten into that phase of it yet.
I know, but still, it's something that, you know, they're concerned about. So the sooner the better. Those things can be, I don't know, Jim said that they were asked not to make accommodations. Who asked you not to make accommodations for the alley?
I've not heard that. It's the south half, Karen.
Just the south half? Okay.
Just the south half.
This half, okay.
What we did is, we looked at the depth of the lots, and a typical residential lot is normally around 112 to 115, if it's 70 to 75 feet wide. And we left, on the preliminary plat on the southern half, we left, we trimmed back the depth of those lots. They're around 130 to 132 feet deep with the amount of property that we have. So, we left a small, narrow piece of land at the back of those lots to align with the northern half. Planning staff asked us not to do that.
Okay.
Because the goal of the city is not to create alleys. It used to be alleys. Alleys are a maintenance issue and a place for people to hide and things, you know, out of the site or path, you know, of normal. So, and plus, garbage pickup is on the street. There's really not a need for alleys today. So accommodating that alley on the southern half, they asked us not to do that.
No. Just wanted to know what was going on, so. Okay. Thank you, Jim.
That brings me up a question. I'm 1200 Baltimore Street, too. I'm Terry Reader, and making the south end of Baltimore Field in an alley is not an issue. All of the residents behind there are more than willing, and have been trying for quite a while, to purchase those, so that we can have more of a yard. So, did you not think about that, or remember that, when that came up for discussion?
This is Anderson with staff. I think we're fully aware of that. It has gone to council. The council did deny the first request. No further requests have been received to buy that. What Mr. Ellis's plat, which is not the one at question today, but related to this site, showed was another alley being created and that portion being deeded over. Since that was not successfully vacated, that's a separate process to deal with, so it should not have been addressed on that plat. So that was why it was not put on that way.
A second request did go in front of you guys, and after two times of going up and asking about it to see where it's at, I was told that, oh, well, we were gonna send out a thing that said if, what was it, 75% wasn't, you know, wasn't offered, that they weren't even going to consider it. And I have evidence now of other areas in town that they've gotten to purchase their alley rights for a dollar, or much, much less than the amount that you guys are asking for. Also, in the first time that we asked to purchase our rights, each person has said that they've maintained that amount of space personally, all these years, mowed it, gravelled, weeded it, and used it as our own personal ground. So it's just hard to think of it, that you guys wouldn't consider that. So we'll bring it up again, I guess.
Obviously, that would be the next step. I mean, we'd go back to council. I mean, the council has a sale of property policy that takes into consideration different factors. It starts out with an asking price. If there's going to be a new garage, a house addition, a new house, or something like that, you can count some of the new taxable value to be generated against that sales price to lower it down to a dollar, like you'll see in the paper when they're building new projects. Or Baltimore Field was conveyed for a dollar with the development agreement requirement to build houses to create that new taxable value. The council can also consider other things on there, such as demolition, or, you know, you could always, you could always approach them with the past yard work and mowings and all that you've done, and that would really be a council decision.
Okay. We've been that, done that. I think all that paperwork that we all wrote on the back that says how much we maintained got lost in the paperwork of being shuffled for probably over a year. And I really think the only reason that it ever went as far as it did is because I made four trips up here to say, where's it at? Where's it at? Let's move it through. And if I need to do that again, it sure will.
You should definitely talk with my staff to get that going again, if you feel that it needs to go back.
Well, and the reason why I haven't is because I was thinking, and was told, that the northern half of Baltimore Field, that their alley would possibly get to stay wider. So we didn't want to purchase our narrow alley rights if the northern half is going to be wider, so we would want to make it the same width all the way down. So that's why we have to do this sooner, because we wanted to see what the northern part was going to do. Does that make sense?
It does. I mean, and the plat as presented doesn't widen that alley at all. It shows it on the documents as a 16-foot wide alley. I don't know how wide it actually is physically, but it's platted as a 16-foot wide alley.
Well, people have built their garages and sheds and stuff out further on the northern part, so I don't know if you're going to have them move those, or if the alley is going to be wider. Or when will that come up for discussion?
And that's my question, since we're talking about the northern half now, but what about the southern half? I mean, down the road, everything's going to have to line up, and you have, the alleys are offset from the 11 to 1200 block, and that's when I talked to Jim about, okay, can we move the lot for the new lots proposed on the south end to make that alley run all the way through? That would allow us to be able to purchase our alley, which we've been after the whole time. And they're not going to build on that, the section of ground that they have for the alley that they- alley that they're proposed. When I was talking to Jim, he says, there's really, if we run the alley straight through on the back of the lot lines now, for the new development, that the alleys that we have now, it's ground that they don't even want. So we were trying to purchase it to take care of it, so we'd have more room. And I know us, for example, we have a spot where we want to back our camper in, and we need the extra room. That's why we wanted to buy the alley to begin with. And we had everybody on board in the 1200 block to join in and purchase the alley, which we've been maintaining over the years anyway, and nobody sent the city a bill for maintaining it. We've done that out of the graciousness of our hearts, and trying to keep the city looking nice. So we're just asking that you give us a little leeway to let us buy the alley for a buck, or even 50 bucks, like we offered, which would only be fair. And then you could, and again, as far as the depth of the new lots on the south half, if you shorten them up like Jim proposed, the whole alley would run even with the 11 and the 1200 block, and if you saw what was over there, I'm sure you'd understand what's going on. And it needs to be looked at. I mean, that's just an issue you guys are going to have to get taken care of, and so the south half is concerned to us, but you're dealing with the north half now, and we just want to make sure that everything goes, flows all the way through evenly. So that's why we're bringing it up.
Well, it doesn't appear that we can do anything about it now.
Right.
But I would definitely encourage you to make an appointment, and come in and talk with staff, and find out what you have to do to regenerate your request, and see if this isn't something that we can continue, seeing if we can assist you with, okay?
We don't have much space to ask for.
Yeah, because if they move, if they shorten the depth of the lots up on the south half, you know, and my understanding is if they don't want no alley, they want to butt them up, butt the lot lines together, then let us purchase everything all the way up to the new lot line. But if they're going to have an alley in there, then let us purchase as much of the alley as we can. We're going to pay taxes on it, the property taxes, so it's going to be a win-win for the city, because somebody's going to be paying for it, and we're going to maintain it. And the other thing that's nice is if we have any violence in the neighborhood, which undoubtedly, there's been plenty over in our neighborhood, that with an alley, at least the cops have a way to get through in between the properties, and they can at least survey and look for people that are vandalizing, or running through properties. It gives them another alternative to try to catch the criminals that are out there. Something for you to think about.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak for or against the site plan amendment? See none, look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
This is Rankin. I'm just curious, and this is kind of, I guess, a side issue to the whole plating, but are these folks looking at wanting more than the 16 feet, or just wanting to purchase that 16-foot alley that currently exists, that right-of-way?
This is Anderson with staff. I think originally, they wanted the 16-foot alley, but then there was some different proposals shown on the plat last month by Mr. Ellis, that showed the potential of a little bit more.
It appears to me that the, from the aerial view, that the alley, if you will, is pretty much, almost all in the school property, or the city property, whatever way you want to put it. The actual travel ingress and egress is kind of hard to tell, because it's shadowy. I don't know if, I mean, it's a 16-foot right-of-way, and it looks like toward the side of the actual, the west side of the alley, it's probably 40 feet wide, I mean, give or take. So I guess I, again, it's probably more of a side issue to what we're doing here, but I'm just curious as to what the desire is. Is it to purchase the 16-foot alley that exists, or to purchase where the driveway is? And if you're looking to purchase the alley, has everybody, and I can't tell whether there's some garages that need to be accessed from, you know, in the middle of the block, or not, and how that would all work?
Well, and the neighbors that are here that want to purchase their part are actually the neighbors on the south part.
Right. Not the north part.
So it's where it's just a, it's just a grass alley, paper alley, we'd call it.
So there's...
The alley's platted there, but it's not actually used, or graded as an alley to the normal person.
And then it doesn't extend any further.
Oh, so it really has nothing to do with this plating part, at this point?
It does not, no.
Okay, sorry.
But I think why they were bringing it up for this plat was because of what you're talking about, where it obviously goes further west than where the property line shows it should, they're saying, hey, if you're going to make accommodations for that, are you going to make accommodations for that to the south? So that if they did vacate and buy their respective portions, that it might be wider than that 16-foot.
Okay, so as a follow-up to the actual portion we're looking at, are there any buildings that are not within the owner's property, that are actually in the alley? Any garages or structures?
I don't know, Kirk, if you've actually gone out there and pinpointed if they're actually encroaching into the alley, or if they're right on the alley, or...
We have not done any field survey work along the alley yet. We'll wait until we're ready to do that for second addition.
I can answer. On the north, on the north part, where you see the gravel and everything, there are four out of the five homes that do have their garages budding up to the alley, that they do need that alley access to get into their garages. The southern part of Baltimore Field, where we live, where all the grass is, there are no garages that need to have the right-of-way there.
And there's no actual gravel or driveway through there? It's just backyard?
No, no gravel, no driveway.
It's right-of-way, but...
Right. The only thing that we have done is that every one of those homes along there have mowed that, because the school system and the city of Waterloo mows it that deep. And that's how tall it is when it gets mowed, let alone when it grows. So all of us neighbors have mowed way out into there.
Okay.
We've even gravelled. You can see a little bit of where our house is, and that's all gravelled, because that gets real muddy, and big mud holes there. So we keep gravelling and maintaining it a lot better than what...
And the reason why we gravel it is because of, like she said, the mud hole, but if you go up on your rip and where it's cut out, the curb's already cut out where the alley's at, people have been going in and out of there, dragging mud in and out. There's just big holes up there in that end of the alley now. So everybody's coming around on our side.
We've even...
And out, so we keep it gravelled and keep it, so that people can get it out to the backside of their homes.
Good. That answers my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other discussion on the site plan amendment, or the preliminary, 12-lot preliminary plat, and four-lot final plat? See none of...
I just want to know one more, sorry. One more final thing on, Kirk made a good point, was if you look at your map on page 113, that is the area that is covered by the site plan and the preliminary plat. If you look at your map on page 122, that is the area covered by the final plat. And so in terms of making a final decision on how that's going to be handled over there on that eastern edge, where the garages may be encroaching, or something like that on the alley, that would be handled by the final plat process of that section. So today, you're just approving a site plan layout preliminary plat, which is a general plan for the area, then we'd have to make that decision, and probably pinpoint exactly if the garages are in the alley area, or if they're right next to it, or what, on the final plat process.
Good.
This is Tack, and I have a question. Since we're going to be voting on this, are we voting on the proposed site plan amendment and the plat, given if we need to make adjustments down the road? Would that be possible, or is this going to lock it in, or...
You can make the motion for one, for two, for all three actions if you want. That's up to you guys, to the commission. And again, I would say that the final details of how we're going to handle that alley location and garage location would be in that final plat, which would probably follow in the next couple of months.
Looking at a preliminary plat for the entire piece.
Okay. So there's room for...
There's room to change it from the preliminary to the final plat.
So voting today would still give room to change.
It's only locking in these four lots.
But that's still subject to site plan approval.
Okay, further questions, discussion? For motion?
Do you need a motion to close the hearing? Have we closed the hearing?
We already closed it.
Okay. I would move that we would accept the request for the preliminary plat and the final plat for the four lots.
And site plan amendment?
Yes.
Subject to staff recommendations?
Yes.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the site plan amendment, 12-lot preliminary plat, and four-lot final plat, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. My motion carries.
You seconded that?
I did.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is another public hearing. Time is now 4:42. This is a request by Blackhawk Contracting and Development for a site plan amendment to the R3 RP Plan Multi, Multiple Family Residence District, to allow for the construction of three new, two-family homes and one single-family home on 0.58 acres, generally located along Lafayette Street, between East 7th and East 8th Streets. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee, stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, site plan, drawings, and aerial photos was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on July 26, 2013." We have a motion to receive and place this notice on file.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those who wish to, the motion carries. For those who wish to speak for or against this request, we'd ask that you please come to the microphone, identify yourselves by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphones. Staff report?
Sandero Staff, applicant is requesting to construct three new townhouses for a total of six units, and one single-family house that was faced East 7th Street and Lafayette Street. Request to construct the new townhomes and single-family house would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area. Would appear that the proposed dwellings and their proposed designs would blend in well with the surrounding neighborhood. Proposed site plan amendment would not appear to have a negative impact upon surrounding traffic conditions in the area. Development would be served by Lafayette Street, which is a collector, and East 7th Street, which is a local street. There is existing sidewalk along the frontage of all lots within the area. Site in question is Zone R3 RP Plan Residence District, and was rezoned from C2 Commercial District on September 6, 2005. To the north is single, new single-family residence Zone R3. South, some light commercial uses and residential uses Zone C2. East, single-family residence Zone R3 RP, and west commercial, west commercial uses Zone C2 Commercial. Area in question is located within the Zone X, 500-year flood plain. There is an eight-inch sanitary sewer located within Lafayette Street, however, there's no storm sewer. There's also an eight-inch sanitary sewer located in East 7th, along with 12-inch storm sewer. The proposed development can be serviced by the extension of existing utilities in the area. There are different styles of houses being proposed for this area. A pitched-roof townhouse and a two-story house will front Lafayette Street, and flat-roof townhouses will face East 7th Street. Each dwelling is shown with a 21 by 22, 440 square, or excuse me, 21 by 22 attached garage on the rear of the structures, and will be accessed through a 24-foot ingress/egress easement, which will exit out of Lafayette Street. Sizes of the living space of the dwellings will range from 1,250 square feet to 1,400. Lot sizes that the new dwellings will sit upon range from 5,280 square feet down to 2,970 square feet. Townhouse dwellings will be located on the smaller of the lots. Single-family dwelling will be located upon the largest lot in the proposed development. Staff's recommendation at the request for a site plan amendment to the R3 RP Plan Multiple Residence District be approved for the following reasons. Request is located within the primary growth area, and according to the City of Waterloo Comprehensive Plan, be serviced by the extension of existing utilities in the area. Two, the proposed use would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area, and would be compatible with existing development in the area. Three, the proposed development is within the density requirements set forth within the zoning orders for this particular district, and that's subject to the following conditions: that the final site plan meet all city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera.
Questions for staff?
This is Tack, and I have a question. In our book, it lists that there is six new townhome units, and one single-family on page 29. But we're reading there's three townhouses...
There's three physical buildings, two units to each building, so that's how I came up with six.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? See none? Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against the site plan amendment request?
Just want to make one other comment real quick. Neither for or against, but I appreciate everything that you guys are doing, and trying to put up these homes and everything. And safety is always a huge concern, and I know I talked about the police end of it, but like, for example, Baltimore Field for just a second, leave the alley in there, because if we have a fire in the backside of a house, the fire department needs to, it'd be a whole lot easier for them to get in an alley, rather than going in between houses that where the backside of a house is on fire. Just something for you to consider. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody like to speak for or against the site plan amendment for Lafayette Street?
My name's Kirk Ashleman. I'm with Keston Associates. I'm representing Mr. Ruff again on this project. Yes, the townhome design facing East 7th. The reason we chose that design is, for those of you that are familiar with the neighborhood, Mr. Nerry is involved with the property on the other corner of East 7th. They have restored that brick structure to the 1800s look on the front, and that's what they were trying to get back to with this brick look on these. The other three units that would face Lafayette, Community Development's already placed three units on the other side of the street, and so that's why we went with conventional gabled roof, and as you're seeing right there on the screen. That's actually a duplex with zero lot line. So it shows the difference of two different styles outwardly, where on the inside, there's a much difference on the interior, around the construction, and it's just that we can blend them to make them fit the neighborhood very easily.
Are these going to be owner-occupied, or rented?
Owner-occupied's my understanding. There are never... I don't, I guess I'm not following the idea of owner-occupied.
They're townhomes, so are you going to be selling them to individuals?
That's the intention, to sell them.
Okay, as opposed to building a complex and renting the units out?
Oh, well, I guess my comment would be at the cost of these units, I don't imagine very many people are going to be wanting to rent them, so...
Okay.
Any questions for the applicants representative? Anybody else in the audience like to speak for or against the site plan amendment? See none, look for a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Same sign, the hearing is closed. Bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action. Bless you.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the request for the site plan amendment with staff's conditions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the site plan amendment request, subject to conditions set forth by staff. All those in favor?
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries. Next item on our agenda, this one will be grouped again with...
C3?
C3 and C4. It'll be a preliminary plat on C3, and a final plat on C4, which is similar to our first hearing. Time is now 4:50. This is a request by Blackhawk Contracting and Development for a site plan amendment to the R1 RP Planned Residence District, and the R4 RP Planned Multiple Residence District, to allow... District to allow for the construction of 14 new single-family homes on 3.19 acres generally located near the intersection of Lafayette Street and Indiana Street. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, site plan, drawings, and aerial photos was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on July 26, 2013." We have a motion received and placed this notice on file?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. For those who wish to speak for or against this request, we'd ask that you please come to the microphone, identify yourself by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphone. The, uh... The request on C3 is also by Blackhawk Contracting and Development for the four lot, 14 lot, excuse me, preliminary plat of Lafayette School replat Linden Place, generally located south of 542 Indiana Street, and then the C4 request is a request by Blackhawk Contracting and Development for the sixth lot final plat of Lafayette School replat Linden Place, generally located south of 542 Indiana Street. Staff report?
This is Westman Staff. As Chair Whitehead said, we're going to conduct, solidate these. Saves time, but it is a little, little more confusing, so bear with me here. The applicant is proposing the site plan amendment to the R1 RP One and Two Family Residence District and the R4 RP Planned Multi Family Residence District, which will allow for the construction of 14 new single-family homes. The requests do not have, appear to have a negative impact on the area, as there are single-family homes surrounding this property on three sides, as well as a mix of residential and the commercial to the south. There will be 10 lots with access from Indiana Street, which is classified as a local street. The remaining four lots would have access from Colorado Street. It would not appear to, adding the 10 homes along Indiana and the four along Colorado would affect traffic conditions in the area. There's a sidewalk along Colorado, but no sidewalks along Indiana Street. However, they will be required to be installed as a part of this project. The property in question is Zone R4 RP Planned Multi Family Residence District and R1 RP has been a planned residence district, has been zoned since 2011. There would not appear to be any drainage issues in the area. This is, area is not located within any floodplains as indicated by the Federal Emergency Management Flood Insurance Rate Map. There's an 18-inch sanitary and 18-inch storm system in Lafayette Street. There is an eight-inch sanitary and 12-inch storm in Colorado, a portion of the way down, but is not connecting to Lafayette Street. There is an eight-inch sanitary in Indiana Street, a portion of the way down, but not connected to Lafayette Street, which they will be connected as a part of this project. The future land use map designates this area as low-density residential, and this request would be in compliance with such designation. The site is located within the primary growth area as designated on the growth area map within the comprehensive plan. As stated before, the site plan shows 10 lots to be constructed along Indiana. Those lots are approximately going to average 59 by 200, or approximately 8,000, or 11,820 square feet. The RP designation does allow for flexibility in its yard requirements, stating that the underlying zoning district in which the development is located shall not apply except that the required yard shall be compatible and/or similar to adjacent properties provided around the boundary of the development. The surrounding area is zoned R2, which has a minimum lot size requirement of 6,000 square feet and a lot with requirement of only 50 feet. Therefore, it would appear that the proposed development would in fact be compatible with the adjacent properties. When the property was rezoned to R4 RP in 2011, it was done so with the condition that the development be highly scrutinized to provide a higher level of design and livability. Items scrutinized include the design of the home for curb appeal, number of stories, setback, setbacks, house size, garage fencing, et cetera. Given the fact that this area is zoned appropriately and has the necessary infrastructure to support this development, the proposed project would appear to be good use of this other area, otherwise vacant property, and would be compatible with the surrounding residential uses. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for site plan amendment in the R4 RP and R1 RP Planned Multi Family and One and Two Family Residence District be approved for the following reasons: The request would have a positive impact on the area by developing a currently vacant property. The request would be in accordance with the comprehensive plan and would be good infill development and would utilize existing utilities and services. The request would appear to meet all requirements of the zoning ordinance and subject to the following conditions: That the final site plan meet all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, included but not limited to parking, landscaping, draining, drainage, floodplain regulations, et cetera, and that the submitted house designs are compatible and exceed the design features extras of existing homes to uplift and provide new excitement to the surrounding neighborhood, that the development includes either an attached or detached garage in each lot to be built simultaneously. The preliminary plat.
Preliminary plat is starting on page 127 in your packet.
127. The proposed replat consists of 3.192 acres located at the former Lafayette School and to the east of the former Lafayette School site. An 18-inch sanitary storm sewer and sanitary sewer are located within Lafayette Street to the south of the site in question. There is an eight-inch sanitary sewer located in the north one-half Colorado and Indiana Streets between Lafayette Street and Dearborn Avenue. There are also 12-inch storm sewers located within the north one-half Colorado Street between Lafayette and Dearborn. As redevelopment of the site occurs, it may be necessary to extend water and sewer southward on both Indiana and Colorado Streets towards Lafayette Street. The surrounding area is also served by other utilities such as water, telephone, gas, cable, et cetera. The proposed replat for the site are planned districts to ensure that capability, compatibility, and suitability development occurs upon these infill sites near already existing and established neighborhoods. There are 30-foot setback, building setback lines shown on the frontages and rears of all lots in this subdivision, which is the minimum requirement for the R1 and Two Family Residence District, which would be the same requirement for the R1 RP. The lots range from 58.1 to 65 feet wide with six-foot side yard setbacks. The ordinance notes that the required side yard setback in the R1 is 10% of the lot width at the building line. The proposed sanitary sewer, storm sewer, as well as water line would be extended down Indiana Street to Lafayette. There are already the necessary utilities in Lafayette, Indiana, Colorado Streets to serve the plat as it is developed. The preliminary plat appears to have all necessary information provided on it that the subdivision ordinance requires. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for the preliminary plat of Lafayette School wanted first addition to be approved for the following reasons: The plat is in accordance with the subdivision ordinance and can be served by existing utilities. The plat is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. The plat will create an additional infill development site in the primary growth area. Now, the final plat's a little different. It does not include, it only includes the six lots along Indiana Street. The proposed final plat consists of 1.62 acres located east of the former Lafayette School. Again, there are 30-foot building setback lines showing on frontages and rears of all lots in the subdivision. The submitted final plat appears to meet all the guidelines as put forth by the subdivision ordinance. However, it will be necessary to submit a deed of dedication for the final plat. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for the final plat of Lafayette School then in place replat first addition be approved due to the following reasons: The plat can be serviced by the extension of the existing utilities. The plat is in accordance with the subdivision ordinance and would appear to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The plat will create an infill development site within the primary growth area, as well as additional housing development options within the city, and subject to the following conditions: That a deed of dedication is submitted and that sidewalks are properly installed along the frontages of all lots within the subdivision as it is developed.
Questions for staff?
I just have just a side question. I notice a lot of these now, oh, this is Tackett. I have a question regarding the sidewalks. Is that to kind of get a head start with the blue zone sidewalk requirements? Because I'm noticing a lot of these now are requiring sidewalks. Is that just kind of start?
That's our standard procedure at this time. Any new development is required to provide sidewalk as it develops. And we're also supporting blue zones.
Well, and the council did adopt a, a blue zone policy that, that supports pushing for sidewalks in new subdivisions development.
Other questions for staff?
This is Rankin. The utility easement between the two, where the lots back up to each other off of West of Indiana, is that, is there something unique about that? Is that meant to be an ax, like an alley, or just a utility access, or is there some reason that it's not just in a easement for utilities?
To the west of the lots platted?
That's a very good question, a nice catch. We've been kind of going back and forth on that. It's, it's an existing alley that was never vacated, even though the, the school was built over the top of it back in whenever the school was built.
Right.
We've been questioning whether we should vacate that as an alley and just dedicate it as a, as a utility easement, because that is where they were proposing to put the sewer, or if they should leave it as right-of-way to make it easier to leave the sewer line open. The Waste Management Department does have some concerns putting sewer lines in the backs of lots. People to generally tend to landscape or put up fences in their backs of their yards, and sometimes that gets into the easements over the sewer lines, and in times of sewer emergency, sometimes minutes matter. So they're, they're kind of going back and forth on that. It's probably fine either way. We just need to make a final decision on how we're going to do that.
Okay. The second question is similar on the plating to the east side, the lots that would front onto Indiana. There's a 30-foot swath along the south side and a, can't read it, 20 feet, I think, on the north side. Is that, who owns that? What's it, what is it? What's it for?
The 30-foot one looks like it was a street.
Chris, can I answer that one for you?
Is it?
I'm Kirk Ashleman with Keston Associates, again. I can actually answer that question because in another lifetime, jokingly with another firm, we actually surveyed that when the school first divested itself, but prior to when the city acquired the property. The guy, that strip along the north side, he had a lot of features of his yard landscaped clear into that piece of property. And at that time, the person that had bought the school was agreeable to turn around and sell that portion to make that work, and that's what happened. The same thing happened on the south end.
Okay.
It was just a matter of there were encroachment issues, and at the time, the gentleman that had it was agreeable to partitioning off small pieces, and then the addition, his work never went any further, so.
So an adjacent property owner outside the plat owns
That's correct.
those two parcels?
Okay. It isn't like we're leaving a strip in there, no. Yeah, your, your map on 140 kind of shows the area being platted, and those are both outside of there, and you can kind of see that they're, they're mowed a little bit different or than the other one.
Anybody else in the audience like to speak for or against the site plan amendment?
I'm Sandy Krug. My, I live at 511 Adrian. My property is immediately adjacent to the ones that would be on the east side of Indiana Street. Those houses are going to back up to my yard, and I also am associated with Neighbors for Life Neighborhood Association. I got a whole list of questions for you. Is there going to be, well, is there going to be any like low-income incentives to purchase these homes, special financing, anything like that? And along with that, what about tax incentives? Anything, any government subsidies for these homes?
This is Anderson with staff. No, there's no, there's no low-income incentives planned for these lots. There was a down payment assistance program from flood money that was used throughout Waterloo, Cedar Falls, and all that. That has run out, so that's not even in, in effect anymore. There would be tax incentives that you're, anyone is eligible for. If you were to do an addition under your house, you're located within the Cura, so you can get tax abatement on that added value. So these new houses would be eligible for
Okay.
tax abatement as new taxable value.
Okay. On Indiana Street, is that, is the street itself going to end up being cement or blacktop? I imagine there's going to be curb and gutter put in there. It's just an oiled street now. They're going to completely rebuild it or just go over top of what's there?
I don't think there's any street improvements planned outside of what is there now. It's outside of the plat, and since it's an existing street, the subdivision ordinance doesn't require them to rebuild the street. They will have to, obviously...
I don't think there's any storm sewers along there in that block.
They will have to provide infrastructure to it. The sanitary sewer, I know, needs to be extended. Otherwise, the, the stormwater would flow.
My yard.
Kind of the rural section roadway. I mean, it should be accommodated to flow properly.
Okay. The driveways for these homes, are they going to be cement or gravel? Concrete, okay. On those lots that are going to be adjacent to mine, there are some city-owned trees along the boundary there. One of them's dead, keeps dropping junk in my garden. Are you guys going to cut those things down someday? We've been questioning this for 30 years, and our response is, we have no interest in it. It's dead. If a kid gets hurt with something that falls off of it.
Have you, have you talked to leisure services before about it?
My husband has talked to the forestry department.
Okay.
And they said, "We could cut it down, but it leans, and it's going to hit the neighbor's fence when it comes down."
I mean, I would definitely, we can make contact after this meeting, but it, it'd be better if you could meet him out there and show him exactly what you're talking about. But Todd Derrifield is the, the city forester, and he would normally have the jurisdiction to look at those.
Okay. Is there any kind of timeframe in mind for getting these things done, getting to build the school down?
The, uh...
First and foremost?
The timeframe, there is a development agreement. The city council has approved for this site that does have a timeline for when they have to build houses a certain number per year to get them built up over this, or the, the land reverts back to the city. The city council has authorized us to go out for bids on the Lafayette School demolition. We do have money budgeted. The question will be if we have enough budgeted.
Probably not.
The bids are due, I think, August 12th.
Yes, August 12th. One thing to realize, though, to try and keep the, the cost down on this project, we have a very flexible starting time, so they can start anytime they, they choose, but they will be required to be done, I believe, the 1st of April of 2014.
The reason we did that, too, is, as Chris noted, we've been getting pretty favorable demolition bids as winter project for some of the contractors, so we tried to make a flexible start time, but with a, with a definite end time.
Okay, enough snow on the roof should take care of it for them. I guess one, my one last comment is, as an adjacent homeowner, I would just love to see that school come down, plant grass in the hole, and be done with it. No houses, leave the green space. There's always kids running around playing back there. We just like having that, and maybe it would add dollar value to my property, but as far as my own personal use value, it's going down. In 50 years, I've never had backyard neighbors. I don't want them now. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak for or against the site plan amendment?
I would. I'm Karen Friedenberg at 534 Colorado, and so I'm within the block that Lafayette School is presently on, and first of all, I want to know the alley that is behind the school that goes on to Dearborn, is that still going to be accessible? Because I use that alley, and so does the neighbor across the alley. Because I use that alley, and so does the neighbor across the alley.
This is Anderson with staff. Yes, there's no intention to close the alley off of Dearborn.
Okay.
The, the, the south end of the alley, however, would not be traversable, I guess, by vehicle. It would be, it would be shown as just green space at this point. So you would have to go back up to Dearborn to come back out of it.
So there's only one way out of the alley?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, it looks, it looks like now from the aerial, a lot of people may be cutting across some, it's actually private property outside of this request and going over to the east, Indiana. And then, again, that, that ground won't be touched. I'm not saying that you should be driving across someone's private property, but it looks like that's where it goes now, the majority of it, and that won't be, that won't be changed immediately.
I don't know if any of the neighbors are really doing that, but when the neighborhood group had their cleanup time, the big trucks did have access to Indiana and Colorado Street and drove out those ways. Also, it seems very tight to me for you to be able to fit four houses on the Colorado Street side. There are four houses, mine being the second house from the Dearborn, Colorado corner, and then two houses, then to have four more. Like I said, it just seems tight. And you can see on this other map that has the aerial view, how Lafayette Street is an angled street. I spoke about my alley coming off of Dearborn, but in the block across from me, that alley comes out the middle of the block going west and east. And so that's approximately where the third house kind of is. And then going south yet, there is another house that is positioned there on the Colorado Street, across the street, okay? Then going south a little bit more, there is a makeshift alley maybe there. And there is three homes that go to the west. And then there is one house that sets, those three homes set on Lafayette Street side at an angle. The alley goes through, and I think it's pretty much of a straight alley. But then there is another house that's right on the corner, at the south tip. And then they have a driveway. And their corner, if I'm turning down, if I'm coming down Lafayette Street, going from the west to the east on this angled spot, and going to turn onto Colorado Street, that corner lot is somewhat of a blind spot until you get right to that corner to see somebody else coming down Colorado Street from the north to the south. And so I also can't envision somebody else having a driveway not very far from the corner on the other side of the street on Colorado. And it would cause accidents and be another spot for you to look for. I somehow think that the house, if there's got to be a house there on that corner, should be facing the same way as the house on the other side of the street. And then maybe you still put a house to the side going the other way to the north of that house to be in conjunction with the house that's across the street. Does that make any sense?
Yes, and.
You following what I'm saying?
I, I am. I know Mr. Roof and Mr. Eschleman are both here. I don't know if they want to talk about how they decided on the lot layout. I imagine it has to do with the design of the homes and what works with them.
We were advised not to have any houses facing Lafayette or to have any driveways onto Lafayette.
Well, that makes sense, but.
That just limits which way they're going, so.
Yeah, but I can't see, I can't see that you would have this, this house right here. And the, it's just real close to that corner. That's a blind spot there. It, it just doesn't, to me, if somebody's going to have a house there, they should have a circle drive or something, so that they won't have to back out, and so that somebody else can see that they're there. Because they're going to have to back out into Colorado Street, kind of almost get into Lafayette Street. Or they're going to be backing out, but going towards the north with their back end of their car. It seems crowded. Also, you talked about having sidewalks put on the Indiana side. So who pays for those additional side, or for those sidewalks? So each of the people that have houses there already would have to pay for their sidewalk? But the ones that don't have, that are on that street?
This is one of my arguments on why I wasn't especially eager to go with the blue zone. Our idea is the fact that when we go over these areas where we're the only ones to build the sidewalk, the neighbors kind of complained if not there, there is going to be sidewalks in it, too.
Right, right. And then who has to pay for those? I suppose there's lots more questions I have, but those are the three that I can think of.
Thank you.
Because I would still like to have access to my alley, so I can get in and out of it.
Anybody else like to speak for or against the site plan amendment?
Cheryl Christiansen, 1704 East Mitchell. My question is, I understand that Roof, the properties that he has owned, either on these school buildings or some of the other properties that he has bought, that the city is responsible for taking care of the maintenance of the lawns and the, and the snow removal. Is that true? And if so, is that going to hold true with all of the school properties that are purchased? Or how did that get through to begin with?
This is Anderson with staff. The development agreement that was approved with Residential Development Partners LLC, which John Roof is a partner in, stipulated that the city would continue to mow and maintain the parcels until they were final platted. So as this particular case here, if everything goes ahead and is approved, the city would continue to maintain the Lafayette School site itself and mow that. And we are responsible for demolition as well. With the final plating of the lots to the east side of Indiana, Mr. Roof would be responsible for maintenance of those and mowing.
Okay, I understood that that was for a 10-year contract. Is that true?
There is. I don't have the development agreement with me. There was a stipulation that they had to build a certain number of homes per year. I, well, I don't think it went out 10 years. I was thinking closer to five or six, but I don't have it in front of me. I can get back to you on that.
So each property owner will be responsible for their own maintenance, as if every other property owner is?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else like to speak for or against the site plan amendment? Seeing none, look for a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing is closed. Bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan amendment. The preliminary plat of 14 lots, and then the final plat of the six lots with staff conditions.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the site plan amendment, 14-lot preliminary plat and six-lot final plat for Lafayette School replat, lend in place, subject to staff conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. That motion carries. The next one will group with item C5 on our agenda. This is another public hearing. The time is now 5:20. The hearing is scheduled at this time. It's a request by Iowa Development Enterprises for a site plan amendment to the R3 RP Plan Multiple Residence District to allow for the construction of six new twin homes on approximately 1.68 acres, generally located at the intersection of Mills Lane and Dyset Road. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, site plan, and aerial photos was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on July 26, 2013." Could we receive, could we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. For those who wish to speak for or against this request, we'd ask that you please come to the microphone, identify yourselves by name and address. Members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphone. And the request on C5 is a request by Keston Associates, Inc. for a 12-lot preliminary plat of the replat of Summerland Farms Lot Number 1, generally located north of Mills Lane between Summerland Drive and Dyset Road. Staff report.
This is Andera Staff. Applicant is requesting to construct six new twin homes near the intersection of Mills Lane and Dyset Road. It would appear that the new development would not negatively impact the surrounding area. Proposed site plan amendment would not have a negative impact on surrounding traffic conditions in the area. Site is, will be served by an extension of Summerland Drive, which is classified as a private street, and is near Dyset Road, which is classified as a collector. Area in question was reasoned from A1 to R3 RP on September 4, 2003, to the north vacant development ground Zone A1, south a single-family development Zone R3 RP, east is Amola Home Park Zone R3 Multiple Residence District, and to the west is single-family development Zone R3 RP Plan Residence District. There is an 8-inch sanitary sewer located next to Mills Lane that runs within an easement to the south of the area in question. Applicant is requesting to construct six new twin homes for a total new, a total of 12 new units facing an extension of Summerland Drive. Each dwelling is shown with a two-stall attached garage, with one unit having a garage size of approximately 24 by 30, and the other being approximately 24 by 28. Each unit will have vinyl siding and one window facing towards the street, along with one entry door, as well as a garage door. Lot sizes that the dwellings will sit upon range from 5,063, 63 square feet to 5,737 square feet. A temporary 50-foot cul-de-sac turnaround will be provided at the end of the extension of Summerland Drive. Staff is recommending that the request for the site plan amendment to the R3 RP Plan Multiple Residence District be approved for the following reasons. Request is located within the primary growth area and can be served by the extension of existing utilities in the area. Proposed use would not appear to have a negative impact upon the area, and it could be compatible with existing developments in the area. Proposed development was within the density requirements set forth within the zoning district or zoning ordinance, and subject to the following condition, that the final site plan meets all city codes, regulations, et cetera, including, but not limited to, parking, landscaping, and drainage. And for the preliminary plat request, that starts on page 145 in your packet. And I'll get that in just a moment. This is the preliminary replat of Summerland Farms Lot Number 1. As a request to split the existing 1.78-acre parcel into 12 lots ranging from 5,063 square feet to 5,737 square feet. Request would appear to be compatible with the rest of the subdivision. Many of the developed and undeveloped lots within the subdivision range from 6,500 square feet up to, excuse me, those are single-family home designs. Other twin home lots in the area range closer to 3,800 to 5,000 square feet. Plat in question's Zone R3 RP. Lots are 45.825 feet in width and 110 to 127 feet deep. All other setbacks are further than required for this type of development. Staff is recommending approval of the replat of Summerland Farms Lot Number 1. The plat is in accordance with the intent to the subdivision ordinance. Plat is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map, which classifies this area as residential and is designated within the primary growth area. The plating orientation, size, and type of development for the lots to be created would appear to be consistent and compatible with the remaining subdivision, and subject to the condition that the information noted above, that the missing from the requirements of pages 30 and 31 of the subdivision ordinance, Section 5.1 and Section 5.2 be provided prior to final plat approval of the plats.
Questions for staff? Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against the site plan amendment request? Seeing none, look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Gustafson?
Second.
Yes.
Kirk Eschleman with Keston Associates. I'm here as the surveyor for this project. Don't know if Chris went over, we are in the process of requesting a variance for a street-side side yard setback. It should be noted that five of the joining property owners that actually face that project have already signed off on letters of agreement that they're in agreement with using a shorter side yard.
Okay. I think that falls under the final site plan approval, applicable to codes, and that'd be at the Board of Adjustment.
Actually, no, it'll be approved here as part of the, the subdivision plan Residence District. The commission and council can approve it.
This is Schrader with staff. I was going to point that out. That was kind of an oversight in the site plan amendment staff report. It should clarify that it's showing setbacks with a five-foot setback from the one street, which would normally be 10-foot, so it does need a, you could call it a variance, but in the RP district, it provides for flexible setbacks. It just has to be approved that way as part of the site plan amendment, so.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
We, public hearing is closed. Bring it back to the commission for discussion or action.
This is Tackett. I move that we approve the site plan amendment, the preliminary replat for the Summerland Drive project, subject to the conditions for city codes, regulations, and also for the missing pages 30 and 31 of the subdivision ordinance, and then those items that we just discussed about the variances.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the site plan amendment and preliminary plat, subject to staff recommendation, and with the setback variance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. That motion carries. The next item will be grouped with item C6, which is again a, it's like a replat. The time is now 5:29. And hearing is scheduled at this time. This is a request by Iowa Development Enterprises for a site plan amendment to the R3 RP Plan Multiple Residence District to allow for the construction of one twin home and two single-family residences on approximately 0.8 acres, generally located along the south side of Summerland Drive, adjacent to 5,732 Summerland Drive. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, site plan, drawings, and aerial photos was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on July 26, 2013." Could we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. For those who wish to speak for or against this request, we'd ask that you please come to the microphone, identify yourself by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking in the microphone. And C6 is a request by Keston Associates for a four-lot replat of lots 62 and 63 of the Summerland Park First Edition, generally located along the east side of Summerland Drive. Staff report.
Andera Staff, applicant is requesting to construct one twin home. Zandera Staff Applicant is requesting to construct one twin home and two single-family dwellings on the lots in question. Site plan amendment would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area. All of Lot sixty-two is located within the Zone A one hundred-year floodplain, and approximately the eastern half of Lot sixty-three is also located in the Zone A hundred-year floodplain. There is an eight-inch sanitary sewer located that runs northwesterly across the western side of Lot sixty-three. There is no storm sewer within the area as the area is drained through ditch drainage. Proposed twin home will each have a dwelling unit of one thousand three hundred and eighty-three square feet according to submitted floor plans. Each dwelling is shown with a two-stall attached garage. Lot sizes that the new dwellings will be constructed upon range from ten thousand five hundred and nine square feet to six thousand six hundred and eighteen square feet where the twin home units will be located. This staff's recommendation at the request of the site plan amendment to the R three RP be approved for the following reasons. Request is located within the primary growth area according to the City of Waterloo Comprehensive Plan that can be serviced by the extension of existing utilities in the area. Proposed use would not appear to have a negative impact on the area and be compatible with existing development in the area. Proposed development is within the density requirements set forth within the zoning ordinance for this particular zoning district and subject to the following condition, that the final site plan meet all city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera. And then for the plat request, which is located on page one fifty-three. Applicants requesting to split the existing point eight oh three acre lot into four lots ranging from sixty-six hundred and eighteen square feet to ten thousand five hundred and nine. Site in question is Zone R three RP. Minor plat, as noted, consists of point eight zero three acres of land. The lots are eighty-three feet, sixty-five, one hundred and two feet, and seventy-seven feet in width and approximately a hundred and three feet in depth. The planned residence district allows for discrepancy in standard lot size requirements, and these would appear to be in excess of those requirements as well as compatible with surrounding developments in terms of lot area orientation, design, et cetera. The houses would be located with five-foot side yard setbacks, twenty-foot front yard setbacks, as well as twenty-foot rear yard setbacks. This staff's recommendation that the replat of lots sixty-two and sixty-three Summerland Park First Edition be approved for the following reasons. Plat is in accordance with the intent of the subdivision ordinance. The minor plat is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map, which classify this area as residential and is designated in the primary growth area. Plating orientation, size, and type of the development for the lots to be created would appear consistent and compatible with the remaining subdivision and subject to the following condition, that the information noted above and missing from the requirements of pages thirty and thirty-one of subdivision ordinance, sections five point one and five point two be provided prior to final plat approval of the plat.
Questions for staff? See none? Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against the site plan amendment? None look to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing is closed. Bring it back to the commission for discussion or action.
I'd like to make a recommendation to approve the site plan amendment and the four lot replat with, subject to staff's conditions.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the site plan amendment and four lot replat for lots sixty-two and sixty-three, the Summerland Park First Edition. All those in favor, oh, subject to staff conditions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. That motion carries. Time's now five thirty-five. And a hearing scheduled at this time. This is a request by Iowa Development Enterprises for a site plan amendment to the R one RP Plan Residence District to allow for the construction of five new single-family residents on approximately three acres located north of the intersection of Burton Avenue and West Douglas Street on the former Van Eaton School site. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, site plan, drawings, and aerial photos was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on July twenty-six, two thousand thirteen." Do we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. For those who wish to speak for or against the request, we'd ask that you please come to the microphone, identify yourselves by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphone. Staff report.
Zandera Staff again. Applicants requesting to construct five new homes along Burton Avenue. Would appear that their request to construct the homes would not have a negative impact upon the surrounding area. Proposed site plan amendment would not appear to have a negative impact upon surrounding traffic and pedestrian conditions in the area. Site was rezone from R two, one and two family residence district to R one RP Plan Residence District on April fourth, two thousand eleven, to the north are single-family residence Zone R two, south is Ray Tiller Park Zone R two, east is single-family residence Zone R two, and to the west is single-family residence Zone R two as well. There is an eight-inch sanitary sewer located within Burton Avenue, and there is also storm sewer in the area that can serve the proposed development. Sizes to lots are each eighty-six hundred and fourteen square feet. Lots, lot widths are sixty-three feet by one hundred and thirty-six feet deep. Each property shows a twenty-foot setback from the front and rear property lines and five foot on the sides. These appear to be the underlying setbacks for the R two, one and two family residence district. Should be noted that the site is Zone R one RP and that the underlying setbacks are that of the R one. The RP does allow for flexibility in setbacks that can be approved through the site plan amendment process. It is staff's recommendation that the request for site plan amendment in the R one RP Plan Residence District be approved for the following reasons. Request is located within primary growth area according to the City Waterloo Comprehensive Plan and can be serviced by extension of existing utilities in the area. Two, the proposed use would not appear to have a negative impact upon the area and can be compatible with existing development in the area. Three, the proposed development is within the density requirements set forth within the zoning ordinance and is subject to the following condition, that the final site plan meets all city codes, regulations, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera.
Questions for staff? See none? Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against the site plan amendment? Kirk, I have a question on the plat. The future development out lot A, are there plans for that? Can it be developed and then accessed to it?
That's part of why this came before the commission when? Do you remember? When was the last time this was in front of this? Yeah. December?
Months ago.
It's been a while.
It's been a while. And actually, it was approved with this layout without the, they did not want to lay out five three-hundred-foot deep lots. Got brought up along with the Tiller Park situation that, okay, was there a way to develop that with a street going through there? And the problem is, is right now, you can't get sanitary sewer much closer than where these lots are now from the east. And that's what's, can, no. The problem is, I'm trying to remember the footage. My recollection is we're about eighteen hundred feet away from having sanitary sewer to service this area alone. That whole area up there is basically served by septic tanks. That's why the spacing on the homes is so far apart and everything else, because even the house immediately east of this piece of property, those homes are being served by septic tank. They're not on public sanitary sewer. It's going to take several hundred thousand dollars to put sanitary up that far. We could put two hundred million dollars where the home's in if we had it, but this, that's the reason for it is it felt like the three-hundred-foot lots were more than needed to be in the city can hold on to the property. And at that time, if sanitary sewer does become available to it, why then we can go ahead and expand it at that time.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience like to speak for or against the site plan amendment? See none, look to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
The hearing is closed. Bring it back for discussion or action.
I'd like to move to approve the site plan amendment.
Subject to the staff recommendation?
Yes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the site plan amendment, subject to the one staff condition. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. That motion carries. And that concludes our public hearings.
What long last?
Next is a special permit request. This is a request by G and K Development LLC for a special permit to allow for the establishment of a temporary rubble fill and rock crushing site for use in association with the U.S. Highway sixty-three reconstruction project located at Seven West Airline Highway. Staff report.
This is Schrader with staff. The proposed rubble fill site could have a negative impact on the surrounding area by creating excessive noise, dust, or other nuisances, although the use would be temporary in nature, anticipated to be completed by July of two thousand and fifteen at the latest, and measures could be taken to limit any negative impact upon surrounding areas. Surrounding land uses are a mix of commercial, residential, and vacant agricultural land. Slight in question is partially zoned C one neighborhood commercial district and partially zoned A one agricultural district. A rubble fill site is permitted in any zoning district upon approval of the special permit. Surrounding land uses include to the north Casey's General Store, which is Zone C two commercial, and other residential homes Zone A one agricultural. Farther to the north is Aerostat Heights, a residential subdivision Zone R one. To the south, Dollar General and a cell tower, Zone C one commercial, as well as agricultural ground Zone A one agricultural. To the east, agricultural ground Zone C two commercial and R four multiple residence district, and to the west, A one agricultural ground. The proposed rubble fill area consists of approximately nine acres of the twenty-acre parcel located at the southwest corner of the intersection of West Airline Highway and U.S. Highway sixty-three or Logan Avenue. The applicants have requested to use a portion of the property for a temporary rubble fill area to allow them to stockpile rubble material such as dirt, concrete, and asphalt, and to crush the rubble to then be removed from the site for reuse in road construction projects. Staff would note that the typical special permit for a rubble fill site for permanent filling, the applicants are proposing that some clean filler dirt will be used to permanently fill a portion of the site, approximately seventy-five thousand cubic yards at maximum, to help level and grade the site and better prepare it for future development. However, the concrete and asphalt rubble are not proposed to be permanent fill, only temporarily stockpiled on the site. The applicants note that all rubble material would be hauled off the site within six months of completion of the road project, which the anticipated completion is by the end of two thousand and fourteen, putting a time period for all stockpile materials to be removed of July of two thousand and fifteen. The applicant, G and K Development, is a sister company of Skyline Construction, Inc., who is the contractor working on the Highway sixty-three reconstruction project. The applicants have noted they plan to demolish the former hardware store and level the site to facilitate current and future uses. The current proposed use of the property is to stockpile, crush, and remove the old roadway materials removed as part of the Highway sixty-three reconstruction project. The long-term use of the property will be developed for commercial or residential uses. Rubble fill sites, which would include temporary fill sites and clean fill, are required to submit a plot plan showing the area to be filled with existing and proposed final elevations. The ordinance also notes that the application shall include an estimate of the number of cubic yards necessary and length of time estimated to complete filling. The applicants have provided a site plan and documentation that provides this information. Staff is concerned with the proximity of the site to residential and commercial uses. Staff has received several complaints from adjacent residential property owners with concerns on noise, dust, traffic, and concerns that the use will negatively impact area property values. The applicants have not started any rock crushing activities on the site, and staff is concerned with the noise levels that might be generated by this activity. A petition of opposition has been submitted representing nine different residential property owners from the area. Zoning ordinance lists the standards for issuance of a special permit. It refers to establishment shall not be detrimental or endanger public health, safety, comfort, general welfares, should not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other properties, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood, will not impede normal orderly development of surrounding properties, that adequate utilities are provided, adequate measures will or have been taken to provide ingress and egress, and that the special permit shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations in which it is located. With the designation of a rubble fill site, the applicant must also abide by the regulations set forth by the Black Hawk County Health Department and submit a rubble site application, the corresponding fee in cash bond or security bond to be posted. Staff is not making a recommendation at this point, but we would like to have, hear additional details on issues regarding noise, dust control measures, and other related issues that could negatively impact the area. If the request is approved, staff would recommend that it be for the following reasons and with the following conditions. Number one, that the use is temporarily, temporary in conjunction with the nearby reconstruction of U.S. Highway sixty-three, and that the site be returned to conditions similar to prior, similar to prior to the stockpile and crushing activities, with permanent fill designed to grade and level the site and make it more attractive for future development. Number two, that the rubble fill site is permitted use in the zoning district upon issuance of a special permit and subject to the following conditions. Number one, activities related with the delivery of material, rock crushing, or the removal of material shall be conducted between the hours of eight AM to five PM, and noise generated from rock crushing or any other activities on the site shall not exceed eighty decibels at the property lines. Your staff report notes a different time. After further discussion, it was suggested to go with the eight AM to five PM, but that is open for discussion. Condition two, adequate dust control measures, such as watering of stockpiles and crushing activities, shall be undertaken in compliance with an air quality permit approved by the DNR. And number three, all material brought onto the site, other than clean filler dirt, used to permanently fill the site, shall be removed from the site no later than June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen.
Any questions for staff?
This is Tackett. Is there a reason why they chose this particular site?
Representatives of the applicant are here. They could probably better address that. I mean, I think they looked pretty hard to find a nearby site for where they could stockpile and crush, so I'm kind of guessing it may have led to what they could find, but I'll let them address that.
With that, I am Ron Fadness with Skyline Construction and sister company G and K Development. Of course, Skyline Construction is doing the road project, and G and K Development is another company which purchased the land to facilitate the road project. And to cut to the chase on that immediately, yeah, the goal is to have the site as close to the project as possible to minimize the disruption and dust and whatever else of transporting at great distances. And certainly, this site had the advantage of being farther out of town rather than in a more densely populated region. And this was an area, it was formerly a True Value Hardware Store, which was on the market and was certainly the best possible site, given the circumstances for the intended use. I'd like to introduce a couple other individuals as well. Again, I'm Ron Fadness, and we have Mike Ritt and Jesse Delaney, who are also with the companies and involved in the project and can answer other questions that I may not be as up to speed on there, will handle the more technical things, whereas I'm the company's attorney. This job has necessarily led to a kind of a tight timeframe. The contract for the work that's being done right now was awarded on March eleventh of this spring. And work and planning began immediately. Obviously, we weren't going to purchase real estate on the hope that maybe we would get a job, so they went about and found this property, and we managed to close on it on June fourth of this year. And during that process, we began discussions with staff and inquired about what was going to be needed. There was initially some discussion about rezoning, but then the conclusion was that we were really looking for a special use permit. but then the conclusion was that we were really looking for a special use permit. And the application for that was submitted on June 24th of this year. And we were advised at that time that it was okay for us to go ahead and proceed with stockpiling as long as no crushing activities took place, and we had an application on file. So we began that process as needed for the road construction project. Obviously, if you can't tear up the old road, you can't begin to build a new one, so. This is a project that would proceed over two seasons, this year and next year. Basically, the removal of debris for this construction season has already occurred. There may be, and Ryan can, or Ryan can address this a little bit more in depth, but we've already, you know, well into the project and done most of the removal for this year. So basically, what is at the site is all that would be at the site for this year. And then next year, we'd have a similar process. And the purpose of keeping the material near the site is that it will be crushed and reused in the base for the new roadway. So the concrete material that is there would be crushed and used as base under the reconstructed highway. The use of this site is, as mentioned, temporary. This is different than most requests for a rubble fill permit, because we have no intention of leaving this here. It's to be placed there pending completion of the construction activities. Though as mentioned, we would have next season, similar to this season, and then by the middle of 2015 at the absolute latest, if not even by the end of 2014, assuming things get put back, everything get, the quantities get used in the new road, everything would be gone. And the long-term prospects for this property are, number one, to tear down the old hardware store that was there. We are currently proceeding with the demolition permit pending asbestos abatement of the old building. So the building would be removed, and fill dirt utilized to level the site to make it more suitable for future development. Most likely, commercial, given that it's, the portion along Airline Highway is zoned as commercial, although the back portion is zoned agricultural. So it could be for anybody to build future housing on if they want, or it could be another commercial development. And that would be, you know, our plan to, once the construction project is over, to just put it on the market and then sell it to whomever can put it to its highest and best use. This is only for use for the Logan Avenue Highway 63 project. This is not a commercial facility where rubble from other areas will be brought in. And this is not something where, hey, we've got a new burgeoning business here, it's simply to facilitate the reconstruction of Highway 63 Logan Avenue. In terms of the concerns that were mentioned, I believe we have a good deal more information to present than what was in the staff report. Needless to say, this has been a hurried process, so we are kind of adding as we go along. Among the different types of permits that are required for this site, first off, we have submitted an application to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for a stormwater runoff permit, general permit number three, which is for construction activities, you know, quarrying and rock processing facilities. So that is, has been submitted to the Iowa DNR. The air permit is governed by the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, and that actually goes with the crushing equipment that comes onto the site. So the real estate isn't permitted per se as a, an air pollution source, but the equipment that is brought on site, which would probably be for a week or 10 days or potentially two weeks, depending on the hours and the quantities, that is already in existence and substantial documentation of compliance with that has been sent to staff. And if you have any questions about that, we can direct you to Mike here, who can answer any questions in particular with that. As to the issue of dust control, we've made arrangements with East Central Iowa Cooperative to provide dust control measures, not only for the Highway 63 job itself, but also for this site. The plan is to use calcium chloride, which is, I think, the, probably the most common dust control agent now used, you know, in counties for gravel roads in front of residential areas and such. And also, as part of the crushing process, there is water application to minimize fugitive dust. And of course, that is all covered by the air permit and governed by the Department of Natural Resources. The crushing operations themselves, and even just the stockpiling, are considered to be quarrying or mining activities and governed by the Mine Safety and Health Administration of the US Department of Labor. And they have substantial controls and regulations on operations, primarily for safety, but for other features as well. One of the particulars of MSHA regulations is noise regulation. The City of Waterloo ordinance provides that noise can be no more than 80 decibels at the property line. In fact, MSHA requires that the noise be no more than 85 decibels for the person standing, running the crusher. So that's very compatible, so. The conditions suggested, propose a timeframe of eight to five, which again is acceptable. It's a trade-off, of course, if you want us to get the crushing done real fast and get the heck out of there, then, you know, the original proposed seven to six, we'd get it done quicker. But that's a decision for the commission, and we're happy to live with whatever the recommendation is. Essentially, this is a site that we believe is going to be improved dramatically from the kind of abandoned nature that it has had for many years. For a couple of years, it has these materials on it at the beginning of a construction season. Over the winter, it's going to be more back to just bare ground. And then at the end of the project, it's a site suitable for future development. Inevitably, no one likes to have issues or facilities such as this anywhere near their homes. The unfortunate reality is, is you don't get new roads without tearing up the old ones. And we're doing our best to keep things close by. Again, we felt this site was the best possible because it was not in as dense a residential area as the construction zone itself, or certainly anywhere south or east or west. And we would be happy to take any questions that you have, and if I can't answer it, I'll defer it to one of my colleagues.
Any questions for the applicant?
Now, are you going to be crushing seven days a week?
No, it would be Monday through Friday, and it would probably be, it's at, and it's, I might ask Jesse to comment. I might know exactly when that would be, sometime, you know, obviously, the material is there, we could probably start relatively soon. It would be, like I said, for a week to possibly two weeks, so, you know, five to 10 days. And then next year, another five to 10 days, of course, depending on what the hours are and what the weather does. So it's not something that would be permanent by any stretch, it would be a brief window where it takes place, and then that material is taken back down to the job site.
This is Tackett, you addressed two concerns that I had had. And that is the decibel range and also the dust control. I know, my husband and I own a recording studio, so we have to be very careful, decibels, and my husband's very sensitive with that. Anything over 90 causes ear damage because of the air particles inside, once they're gone, they're gone. And it's not hard to reach 90 decibels even in certain circumstances. So is there any documentation that shows that when an operator is exposed to 85 decibels, that the residents, given the proximity to the site, will only hear 80? And my second question is a dust control factor. I mean, I don't know what the parts per million is on the dust, how far will it travel on certain days? If we have wind gusts, you know, 15, 20 miles, five miles? What the composition is of the dust is, I mean, are, is there any documentation that could verify that the parameters that you need to work in for, you know, state and federal and, you know, EPA guidelines, that those can be verified? Because those are my two concerns right there, it's the noise. You know, I work a part-time third shift, so sleeping, for some people that do work a third shift at the hospital, I know I wouldn't appreciate it, and I know that we all work different hours, but that would be a concern. So it's the noise, and it's the dust for health and safety, because I'm getting licensed to be an esthetician. So tomorrow, I have a final on etymology, anatomy, physiology, chemistry, and everything. So a lot of these things I'm looking at, like calcium chloride and those compositions. Those are my concern, is the safety of what kind of dust will be traveling, which direction will be traveling, as well as can we guarantee that those decibels will stay no more than 80 or hopefully less?
Yeah, and as mentioned, the 85 decibel limitation is for the individuals standing right next to the machine, excuse me, speaking of decibels, and, you know, operating the equipment. So the, it, the sound dissipates rapidly as it, you get farther and farther from it. And this would be a good area in the sense that unlike in rock quarries where crushers are most often at, there's walls bouncing the noise right back, so you get a rebound effect here, it's, you know, open sky, so it shouldn't be a tremendous issue. And when the MSHA inspectors come to a plant, which they do unannounced quite frequently, they do decibel testing, so, you know, they would ensure enforcement that it's never more than 85 at the equipment itself. And we would obviously try and position it as best possible to minimize influences outside. And I believe most of the residences in the area are a fair distance away with significant trees. Thankfully, this is a very wooded area. As to the dust, the dust that we're dealing with is just, you know, dust from a truck hauling in, you know, crushed asphalt or concrete, and then most particularly when it's being crushed. And the calcium chloride is primarily to eliminate dust or, you know, trap fugitive dust from travel. And the application of water is the primary means of minimizing the, containing the dust at the time of crushing. So it's different approaches to different types. But as far as, I believe you asked about the type of dust, it's, you know, like gravel dust.
I have a question, do they have to have those, the back of the containers of trucks or they haul it, do they have to be covered? Is that required? Will they be open when they travel to and from the site?
Defer to Ryan on that one. You'd say, the loads would be tarped?
I guess that's my concern, and with all due respect, I mean, no disrespect, I know that in many professions, what the law states is the ideal we want to strive. But because sometimes things can be shaved because we don't know when inspector's coming, I guess my thing is, when, is there any way we can demonstrate that the decibels, like if we can go to a rock crushing quarry now and hear it, can it be measured? I know there's even apps, we recommend people to go into like a church or so. If the sound's too loud, you can aim it and it will read the decibels. Is there anything we can find to see that, you know, the distance from the residence to the quarry will be actually 80 or less? That's what I'm saying, is there documentation show that this is correct, or can we hear it for ourselves? Or can it be checked, just so that we have an idea that yes, this will be complied? And I mean this respectfully, I'm just, I just want to know that what you're being told and stuff will get through, and we're just not skirting things to, you know, comply. Because I do appreciate the timeline, I know you're saying the faster we get in, the faster we get out, the less you deal with it. On the other hand, I don't want to see the residents' health or lifestyle or anything that would comply with a special permit be skirted. And I think safety and concern and quality of life, I believe, should come first.
This is Schrader with staff, I'll take a stab at the noise issue first and then let any follow-up they have. I mean, part of the problems, you know, is they haven't set up a rock crusher on this site, so it's hard to know exactly what the sound characteristics on this site are going to do. But I did a little bit of research on sound, and in a, you know, perfect environment, so not factoring in issues like wind reflection off of other buildings, structures, berms, so just looking at how noise dissipates, you know, in a, just a perfect environment. I don't know exactly where they would plan to put the rock crushing operation. He talked about kind of, you know, the ideal location is going to be, you know, as far away from the property lines they can get it. There's a point that would be just west of the existing hardware store, that's probably right at just over 100 feet from any property line. And that's just the property line, so like the property line to the north, you've still got, you know, Airline Highway and, you know, beyond that, angled at a distance to get to the residence to the west. But at 100 foot in perfect conditions, and 85 decibel noise at 100 foot will reduce down to around between 55 to 60 decibels, which is pretty low. Now, again, that's perfect environments, and I can't say, you know, if they set a rock crusher up on that site, how it's going to react. Wind can play into that, you know, reflecting off the building, the existing rock pile sitting there can affect some of that. But at 100 feet, there should be quite a bit of sound reduction, and I would think that they should not have problems staying under the 80 decibels. So I'll let you expand on that if you want.
Yeah, obviously, the sound dissipates dramatically as it travels, and that, you know, as I mentioned with this site, I think it's the, in particular, the fact that there's no tall structures or, you know, quarry walls surrounding it would mean that it would dissipate quicker than it would in most sites where crushers are run with the 85 decibel requirement.
Other questions for the applicant?
This is Rankin, and I'm going to abstain from voting on this issue due to a potential conflict of interest, I guess. I'm just wondering if, if staff actually said that you could, as long as you had a permit applied for, that you could store this material there with the idea that you would be able to crush it on site?
It was specified that no crushing was to take place until the permit was issued, and that has not happened.
So it was your, your company's understanding that you would get the permit?
No, it was our understanding that we were allowed to put stuff there pending permit approval. And with the permit, we would be able to process it.
So what's the backup plan?
Well, the backup plan, I guess, would be to try and find an alternate site. But you're never going to find anything that's going to please everybody, there's going to be a new group of neighbors, whatever you do.
This is Tackett, is there any way, because we've had this issue come up with another permit facility, but they did move it into an area that was off and seemed to satisfy the residents, and they were able to make it work. So I'm wondering, I guess, isn't there any way we can, if this needs to be moved, that accommodations can be made? Because I agree with him, do you have Plan B if this doesn't go through?
Plan B is significant extra cost and fuel consumption and inconvenience to the road project. I don't know what that would be, but it would be another facility at a greater distance. And, you know, all that extra truck traffic going that much farther right now, you know, again, this site was ideal because the trucks coming from the job site have a short distance to travel on a four-lane highway, and they're at the site. Though if this was to take place on, you know, lesser developed roads, it's going to be more of a traffic hazard, a lot more miles traveled.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Thanks, anybody else in the audience like to address the issue? I think we have some neighbors.
Good evening. My name is Pat Burke, I live at 130 Sabrina Circle, which would be one block north of Airline Highway. And I'm one of the neighbors that presented the petition against this site that's in your packet. And part of what the site, it says is that we state that it will be injurious to our use and enjoyment of our property, and that we believe that approval of the application will substantially diminish and impair property values. I guess, has everyone on the commission had time to read the two-page opposition paper that I put in there? So if you have, I won't take our time to, to read that, I'll just comment on some things on it. As 172 says, and I think some of the questions the commissioner was asking you, being on the commission, must be pretty familiar with it. And I was really surprised, to me, how strong the statute was as far as protecting the existing neighbors and the, and the... and the burden that must be met to approve a special permit application. In other words, we can talk about the dust control and steps we're going to take for noise and everything else, but unless you're with certain that it's not going to cause injury to the use and enjoyment of a person's property, the statute says you can't approve it. It's, it's pretty clear to me. Just like, let's see. And the property values, you have to make a determination, and this is a two-year thing right now at this time, but do you think somebody right across from the site's going to get what they paid for their house last year? I know my niece and her husband paid a hundred thousand dollars, and I bet you they wouldn't get near that right now with this site up and running. So I guess you need to ask yourself, if you're in an R1 district across from a C1 property, and you had a rubble site and operating, would that be injurious to you and your household? Would that take away from enjoyment of using your property?
May I ask a question? This is Tackett. Is that true that what they're looking at is Zone C1?
This is Schrader with staff. Yeah, the northeast corner of the property is Zone C1. It would cover all of the areas where they're showing stockpiling, where they're proposing to crush. Some of the area where they're showing permanent fill, maybe go far enough to the west or to the south that it would go outside of the C1 area. But again, the rubble fill site as a special permit use is permitted in any zoning district, so it would be permitted upon approval of a special permit in either the C1 or the A1. But yes, most of the frontage along Logan Avenue and Airline Highway is Zone C1 commercial.
That was my question. I thought operations like that would be more typical in a C3 M1?
Actually, it'd be M2. If they were proposing to create a permanent rock crushing facility, we would not consider that a special permit use and would require M2 zoning. So the applicant noted in very preliminary discussions with the city, there was discussions of a rezone request, and that is correct. And, and very early on, there was not a lot of information as to what exactly the operation was going to be, you know, the fill type, permanent versus temporary. So a lot of the early discussions were about rezoning it. It would have needed to be rezoned to M2 heavy industrial, which obviously, we would have been very concerned about a rezone of this site to M2 heavy industrial, wouldn't fit with the character of anything surrounding it. So staff was recommending, if they were going to submit a rezone request, to rezone it to something like a C1 CZ conditional zoning. But as we got further involved in the discussions with the company and understanding what they were proposing, that it was primarily a temporary rubble fill site, some permanent fill, but clean fill, but the actual rubble part of it just being temporary, we determined the best path would be the special permit, which is a permitted use in any zoning district.
Reverting back to one seventy-two then of the code subsection five, you know, we've talked about taking all these steps to alleviate the noise and everything, but it still reverts back to that you have to meet the standards in subsection four, and specifically, we're talking about B. And, you know, I, I think the language is strong enough that you'd actually have to change the statute before you can allow the application. And some other things, just, they, they talk about their, is it the rock crushing machine that's only going to run from eight to five?
Potentially, all activities can be limited to eight to five.
But that's all it's being stipulated to at this time, eight to five. Right now, they have the unloaders and everything run, and the trucks are running out there till eight, eight o'clock at night, starting at seven, seven in the morning. And so it's, they might do that for two weeks, rock crusher, they're going to run it. And there's a lot more that, the site's just been, you know, the, the right-of-way hazmat mode, the weeds are growing up back there and a lot. But basically, we haven't enjoyed our property like we have the previous years because of this operation, and we won't. And if they bid for more of this project, and I would imagine, if, I would, if I bid for the first part, if I bid for more of it, so we even looked at this at two years, we might be looking at four years. Because why would they want to go to another site if they use this one? So, I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your volunteering. Our city couldn't operate without you, and I'd like to have a specific discussion about how this permit would be allowed under section, subsection 4B before they take a vote on it. Thank you.
Blanche Devall, I live at one fifty West Airline Highway. You, the gentleman with, that was speaking with everything, made a comment about C1, M2. My question is, is where the rubble is now, is considered C1? Cornfield is directly across from my property. Is that going to extend into that? Because I know they already went and graded over and built up the black dirt and stuff, and at one time, the city came out to line up and mark where sewers were, and the graders had already started before the city even came out and marked it. So it's like, applied for a permit, started work, graded, and a lot, a lot of the procedures were followed, from my understanding. So the two questions is, is that rubble going to go into the agriculture, agricultural part?
This is Schrader with staff. As part of a special permit approval, fill could be placed in the agricultural. It's not limited to the C1. The permanent fill is only proposed as the clean fill, not the rubble, concrete, and asphalt. But regarding the, you know, limitations of what's zoned commercial, if page ninety-eight of the packet could be brought up on the screen? I don't know if they've got that one loaded or not. That's the overview. It shows what's zoned C1 versus what's zoned A1. There it is. That red star is kind of, you know, centered on the property. The property does go farther to the south of that. There's the little acreage that was split off on the west end of that. The C1 area is within that black box around that red star, so it essentially encovers the entire frontage along Airline Highway, all the way to that acreage.
Where the hardware store was, his parking lot, and then he had a fenced-in area, which was grass and everything, he had all those storage sheds.
What's zoned C1 keeps going to the west of that, all the way to that little acreage.
Okay. So he'll be able to use part of that for the rubble?
What's zoned C1 has nothing to do with the request, because the request for the special permit is allowed in either the C1 or the A1, but where they're proposing to stockpile, I don't know how well the actual site plan will-
I know where the stockpiling is right now. Is it going to maintain right there, or is it going to go beyond?
The, the stockpile will remain in the same general location.
It won't end up in that acreage? And that's a guarantee and a promise? Because that's beautiful land right there, and I know you're planning on putting some sort of development, selling it, but that's, you know, you see deer there, you see animals, and, you know, they feed out there and stuff, and where the rubble and the rock pile is, was where the building in the parking lot, his backyard area was. So.
Yeah, the, the area to the west is Zone C1, but basically, what you see is what you get in terms of, you know, essentially, for this year, the degree has been taken from the job site and placed there, so, and that will go away before more comes, so basically, things would be contained to where they are. There is some dirt being brought from the job site. Obviously, there's a lot of excavation being done, and that field dirt is being placed over there to level it off, not for this purpose, but for the future development of whatever commercial might come when the special permit expires. So it's kind of leveling the site, because right now, it's a rather, you can develop on there without placing significant field dirt, which is what's shown on the site plan. So basically, you've got one year's worth of, you know, concrete rubble that will go away, and another one that would come next year and go away next year, and then this would terminate.
And my other concern is, I do work third shift, so I've come home, and I've come and stopped at the traffic light on Logan to turn west on Airline. I have watched cars coming up Airline, light changes, the way the dust and the dirt's been, and I have myself called twice on, to see about having that cleaned up, because I've watched cars slide. Well, if it still progresses in between, and you can still do stuff as the weather changes, how often is someone coming and going to clean that? I mean, from now till winter? That's, I mean, that is a safety hazard. I have watched cars slide. I mean, they hit the dirt, and yeah, maybe they've gone a little bit too fast, which is their, their responsibility, but it has been a hazard. The dust is going across properties. We have a daycare there, you know, and you have other businesses, so the air control of the, air quality control is one, and also the sound. And someone did bring up that the dump truck should be covered. I mean, if I have to cover my pickup truck to take leaves and everything to the city site, I think they should be covered, because I have come up behind them without them being covered and turning in there, and you can see if it's windy or the speed they're going, the dust is hitting everywhere. So that's another concern. I mean, they applied for a permit, permit wasn't approved, they started putting stuff on the site already. They were running six days a week, eight to eight. So, you know, limits on the time and how they travel with the rubble, is also a concern, and the sound. So I'd appreciate it if you reconsider, you know. I don't like it being there, and I know my neighbors don't. Thank you.
We're also concerned about the businesses there. I know a couple of them personally, and actually tried to do a little more business. We want this project finished ASAP. We know we're just in a quandary now, but we weren't the ones that put us in this position. We were put in this position, and we shouldn't be the ones to have to have the injury to our property when the ordinance says we don't have to have it.
Anybody else like to address the special permit request?
I mean, just, summarily, we understand the concerns of the neighbors, and certainly there are measures that can and should and will be taken. Obviously, conditions mean that they will be. Dust control measures have not been undertaken at this site at this time, but we have made arrangements for that going forward, so that should significantly alter that. And I'm sure that we'll have vigilant neighbors who will, you know, keep an eye on things and report, so we intend to be good neighbors, give them a beautiful road, and then get out of the way. So I think the concerns raised are legitimate, but to find that there is a depreciation of property values because you're getting a nice four-lane road coming to your property, and this stuff that is sitting there right now, basically, the worst of it this year, the stuff is there, you know, and it was, you know, brought on with the knowledge of, of city staff. And we'll get it out of there, we'll come in once more, do the same thing, and then all said and done. So, I understand the concerns, but believe it's in the best interest of the community, in particular, those who are traveling the roadway, to have this project proceed. And as far as, you know, Plan B, obviously, if the permit is denied, we'll have to proceed with something else, but certainly, there was very sound reasons, not just economical in our favor, but very sound reasons to choose this site for the reasons stated above, in terms of minimizing truck traffic and keeping this in a, you know, as compatible of an area as we could possibly find near the job site. Thank you.
If I may, it's been talked about that rubble sites can be in any commercial district, but this is a special permit application. Section 4B applies. They can do everything they want under subsection five, noise, everything else, it still goes back to subsection four, and in part eight, we're citing part B.
Thank you.
Thanks. We'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Any action item that we'd like to take with this request?
Maybe for everyone's edification, is there two different scenarios, Noel, as to how this would play out with an affirmative or a negative vote?
Who goes to, whatever we say goes to-
Goes to the board of adjustment regardless for final decision with the recommendation. And of course, we put the, in the staff report, we put the recommendation, if you did approve it, these are the recommendations for conditions in there. But regardless of, the planning commission is just a recommending body in this case, the board of adjustment will have the final say.
I'd like to move that we not approve the special report, permit.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to deny the special use permit. Do a roll call vote on that, Mr. Anderson. So a yes is a denial?
Yes.
Rankin?
Abstain.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Mehe?
No.
Whitehead?
Yes. The request has been denied, three to one with one abstention. That'll still go on to the board of adjustment, which meets later this month?
Fourth Tuesday.
Fourth Tuesday of the month. Thank you. That brings us to the next two items on our agenda. These will be items C7 and C8 grouped together. It's a preliminary plat and a final plat. This is a request by Craig Fairbanks Home for a five-lot preliminary and final plat of Crossroads Estate replat number five, generally located along the north side of Hummingbird Circle between Bobalink Drive and Sarah Drive.
Page, page one sixty-one. Beloved packets. You ready?
Yeah.
Schrader with staff. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area, and the plat would promote additional development in the area, which would be consistent to already existing development surrounding. The plat will have frontage on Hummingbird Circle, Bobalink Drive, Mockingbird Lane, and Sarah Drive, which are classified as local streets. Currently, there are no pedestrian sidewalks serving the lots to be platted, but the deed to dedication of Crossroads Estates replat number two requires that when lots are developed, sidewalks be placed on the west side of Bobalink, but not on the east, which this plat has frontage along, the north side of Hummingbird, but not the south, which this lot has frontage on, and the west side of Mockingbird, but not the east. Replat number three and four require sidewalk along the east and south side of Hummingbird. Staff feels that all street frontages within the proposed subdivision should be required to provide sidewalk. The plat does not show any proposed sewer or other utility extensions, and it would appear that the proposed lots can be served by existing utilities, as they are along existing streets with existing infrastructure. At the technical review committee meeting, it was discussed that the two areas being excluded from the plat should potentially be looked at as being added into the plat and be lots within it. The applicant's engineer- The applicant's engineer indicated that he would investigate this further, reviewing issues surrounding those properties, being currently part of a condo association, while the areas proposed to be platted are being removed from that condo association. Staff is recommending that the request for the preliminary and final plat of Crossroads Estates replat number five be approved, as the plat is in accordance with the subdivision ordinance and can be served by existing utilities. The plat is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map, which classify this area as mixed commercial, including medium to high-density residential. The plat will create additional infill development within the primary growth area, and subject to the condition that a submitted deed of dedication includes wording requiring sidewalks along all street frontages. Questions for staff?
Anybody in the audience like to address the preliminary final plat request?
Wendell Lupkus with VJ Engineering. This probably isn't nearly as controversial as anything before, but basically, yeah, we're not going to include the existing condo buildings, because they are in a condo regime. There's, there's utilities out there for everything. I think the developer is agreeable to sidewalks on all frontages. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Wendell? Thanks. Bring it back to the commission for discussion and action.
This is Tackett, a move that we approve the preliminary and final plat of Crossroads Estates replat number five, including staff recommendations.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the preliminary and final plat of Crossroads Estate replat number five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. That motion carries. And that brings us to our next item, which is an encroachment agreement. This is a request by JSA Development for an encroachment agreement to allow for the placement of a temporary sign located within the city-owned right-of-way, located in front of the buildings at 223-229 West Forest Street. Staff report?
This is Schrader with staff. The applicants, applicants are requesting the encroachment agreement to allow a 105-square-foot triangular bulletin board style sign encroaching within the right-of-way. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood, as the request is temporary and is located in a wide area of right-of-way that contains a number of other objects, including trees, poles, and benches. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic or pedestrian conditions in the area. The proposed sign would be located over five feet from the road and in the middle of the sidewalk, with sufficient room for pedestrians to still utilize the sidewalk. Currently, the applicants are redeveloping the historic properties in front of where they're proposing to put, place the sign, and would like to temporarily place the sign with a triangular bulletin board style, kind of like construction job site style signs within that right-of-way of Forest Street to advertise the renovation of the buildings. Proposed sign is 41 square feet larger than the typical 64 square feet maximum for bulletin board signs. However, the Board of Adjustment has already approved a variance to the size. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for the encroachment agreement be approved, as the request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. Request is temporary and will be removed after the renovation is complete, but no later than one year from the date of issuance of the permit. And subject to the following condition, the sign shall be placed over the existing tree grate where a tree has been removed.
Questions for staff? Anybody in the audience like to speak to the request?
It is temporary. The attention is that we've come to the conclusion that sometimes we don't do enough, do enough jobs telling people what we're, what we're improving, what we're improving at. So we'd like to just provide some more information to both the viewer and allow less pedestrian traffic, which is why the triangle-shaped nature of it, the backside facing the buildings is aimed at pedestrians, the two sides that are angled facing either direction of Forest Street are aimed at vehicular traffic.
Questions for the applicant? Bring it back for discussion and action.
I would move that we approve the encroachment agreement for JNS Development.
Second.
Oh, with the staff condition?
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the, or recommend approval of the encroachment agreement, subject to, or with the one staff recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. That carries. Next item is the street naming. This is a request by the City of Waterloo to name a new private street as Arbor Lane, generally located west of Maywood Avenue.
Staff report?
This is Chris Western with staff. The engineering department has reviewed this request and concurs with the name of Arbor Lane, as it does not conflict with any other street names, and recommends approval. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the street naming and dedication be approved for the, for that reason. Any questions for staff?
Questions? Anybody in the audience like to speak to a street name? Look for action on this item?
This is Tackett, a move that we approve the street name.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to recommend approval of the new private street name of Arbor Lane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. We have a new street. And last item in our agenda items is plans and study fiscal year 2014 to 2018 capital improvements program.
I asked this to be brought back, because I wanted to have a chance to look at it. So thank you for giving me the extra time.
Very exciting reading.
Any comments, questions out of that, out of your bedtime reading?
No.
Okay, so we need to look for a motion to receive that and place it on file.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item is discussion. Staff have anything for us? Having none, look for a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.